...this evening and we expect it to be coming forth in the next week or two. Now that completes the public comment and the next item for those who, those who have read the agenda with a close eye will be aware that in order to accommodate the agency officials who are here tonight to address this on a particular subject, the agenda contemplates that this matter would be heard at seven or soon thereafter is possible and I refer you to Agenda Item 10A, an oral presentation regarding a 710 freeway tunnel and consideration of a city council position to further study of this alternative method for completing the 710 freeway. We expect that Roger Snobel, the CEO of the Metropolitan Transit Authority, to lead the presentation and he'll introduce others who are participating with him. This is a presentation that was previously, maybe six weeks ago, made to the City Council of South Pasadena and notwithstanding their long opposition to the 710 freeway, they have indicated no objection to the further study of this particular option which might provide a successful and a satisfactory way of dealing with this longstanding issue. Roger, we welcome you tonight and we thank you for being here.
Well, thank you Mayor and good evening Mayor and members of council and Steve Andrew Kurtz, it's a pleasure to be here to talk about this. I'm sort of a new person on the block. I came walking in a year and a half ago and somebody said gee, I just have about getting a 710 going and I said, what's that? And found out and I found out a lot more than I ever expected to find out. But basically what we are doing here, and I have Doug Felling from Caltrans and Mike Masana from SCAG and the three of us have been looking at this situation, each of us coming from a little bit different angle and we've come up with an idea we think as time is coming we'd have to proceed with if we could. Basically, shortly after I got here, I met with Jeff Morales and he told me at that meeting and Doug was there as well, that he didn't think that Caltrans was a very good landlord and he really wanted to get out of the landlord business and gee, there was a bunch of houses along the 710 and since the MTA has tunnel experts and because we have community relations expert people, he, they asked if we would kind of lead the charge, seeing if there wasn't some way we could revive the 710. And in doing that, we started to look at the old plan which called for a huge cut and cover and nowadays, you just don't even think of that, at least coming from other environments that I've come from, you wouldn't even, that would be one of your last resorts in doing deep cut and cover because now, today, many, many cities are involved in major highway tunnels throughout the world. It's very common in Europe. I was just beginning of the year, I had the privilege of being in Prague, Czech Republic and there'd be about a thousand kilometer long tunnel that was under construction right now, so I'd actually had a chance to walk into the tunnel and visit with it and visit with the engineers. So that would be a very similar tunnel in configuration as to what we're talking about here, but done a different, seen a different method. But because we have tunnel experts at the MTA, we are involved in tunneling. Los Angeles, the Los Angeles area has several tunnels. In fact, there's two large tunnel projects going on right now and have been going on for quite a long time. Now, those are sewer projects, but they're large for tunnels using the same method that we would think would be appropriate in this situation. And at Jeff Morales's and Doug's request, we started to look into it. In the meantime, I had the opportunity to talk to Mark and he said that there have been, certain people have suggested we take a look at tunnel technology now because it had evolved a lot in the last 10 years and wouldn't that be a good thing to do? And so with the cooperation of my board of directors, we put our tunnel experts to work and asked them a couple of different questions. The first question was, is a tunnel feasible? Are there showstoppers in the geology and the configuration that might be in this particular area? And secondly, what kind of configuration might we look at and how much would it cost to do it? My tunnel people came back after taking, and there was a lot of data available, this is called Hong Kong history, to them and they were able to get a hold of that data. They came back to me and were passing out what we think is a napkin drawing. In fact, we tried to figure out how we're going to split this out of napkin, we haven't been able to figure that out. But think of it as being a napkin drawing because that's really what it was. And our tunnel experts said there are no geologic reasons that we wouldn't be able to do this. No groundwater issues, the geology is good for closed face tunneling that is being done in many different parts of the country, including right here in our area. And it is one direct earthquake factor across that they feel could easily be mitigated so that it could be over excavated and it would not be a problem unless there was a direct event right on that fault and even at that point, it would be a matter of committing and repairing it, but they would construct it in such a way that it could be repaired if that fault were to fail. So in addition to the feasibility of being able to do this with the new technologies available, they also came back and said that they felt that the cost would be in the vicinity of about 1.3 billion dollars, which is not that much more than the old plan would have ended up costing by now. As it turns out, somebody else is using a tunnel expert to take a look at the same thing and we learned of that, we think it was South Pasadena, but I'm not really sure who was paying for it. And we got our two tunnel experts together and they agree. So we've got two tunnel experts who say this is something that with today's technology can be done. And I can go into the way it's done, we call this closed face, earth pressure balance machine and all that sort of thing. But basically, after the bored machine goes through the earth, the inside part of the tunnel, the earth is never exposed to anybody inside the tunnel. It's, there's a big tube, the liner is constructed inside the tube and as the bored machine advances, those liners are exposed, but it's a complete concrete structure and it has its own integrity, so the gaskets and things of water and gas can't get into the tunnel. So there is, the feasibility of doing this is there today. Excuse me, the paper that we passed out to you shows some of the advantages to being able to do a bored tunnel as opposed to cut and cover. It saves a whole bunch of houses because you wouldn't have to destroy those houses to excavate, you'd de-excavate and undo them. And we think that it makes a lot of sense to be able to serve as many houses as we possibly can, but still make sure that we can have a facility to go through there. It also saves neighborhoods, it saves an awful lot of problems. We have been talking to many people about this, this idea and we've got a whole bunch of input into it and ideas about configurations, some of the concerns that people would have, such as where the air shafts would come up, if there are air shafts, that still would be, have to be determined because of course, you don't want an air shaft coming up in a neighborhood either. What actual configuration of the tunnel would look like and would it disturb houses on the surface and those kinds of things. So all that will have to be studied and studied in great depth before we start it, but we have a reasonable expectation that we would be able to do this with today's technology with very little disruption. We think we can, many of the issues that we've heard, we think we can mitigate by through design as we get into the project. So that's really what the MTA's purpose is, is to take a look at it and to start to talk to people, to come up with ways that we might be able to come up with agreements, to allow us to go forward with this, to mitigate people's concerns as much as we possibly can and to eventually be able to get a project that's very critical to the region in place. And I'll let Doug and Mark just tell you a little bit about what their views on the situation are.
Thank you very much. Welcome, Mark.
Thank you Mayor, Paul Bogart and members of the city council. Before I speak to the issue, I'd like to first thank the city council for the, many members of the council that contribute to our committees. Councilman Tyler is very active on our administration committee, in fact, has just recently been elected or appointed vice chair of that committee and Vice Mayor Little serves on our transportation committee and Councilmember Suter on our CEHD committee and I do want to thank all the contributions from the city. The project that we're talking about tonight is probably the oldest longstanding transportation issue that is unresolved in our, in the transportation plan and has a storied history and a very confrontational history. About a year ago, we began looking at the issue of the 710 and can we move it forward on the schedule identified in the regional transportation plan? And that schedule called for this tunnel, at least a portion of it being implemented by the year 2010 and it's an important element, not only of the transportation plan, but also of the air quality plan within the region. We began looking at the possibility of tunneling technology and the cost reduction that Roger has already indicated that we're seeing across the world of a globe on tunneling technology and began to find it from a systems point of view that it might be feasible. Roger Snobel and the MTA board has committed the resources to enable us to really flesh out and see whether or not it is feasible. All of the various technical communities that have looked at it preliminarily, all are within very close proximity of one another with respect to cost and with respect to issues. And I'm not going to reiterate what Roger has already indicated to you, but there does not appear to be any single reason that could stop us moving forward. What could stop us from moving forward is whether or not the communities along the corridor and the longstanding issues in opposition to the freeway, whether or not we can develop the acceptance and the support of the communities along the corridor. And in that respect, we started with the city of South Pasadena to discuss whether or not they would participate and enable a refined study to flesh out all the issues and we have not fleshed out in detail all the issues, but whether or not they would participate. And they indicated that they would not support a tunnel at this time, that they would participate in the study that would flesh out and respond to the issues that were raised in their public forum. There's also the community of Alserino, which we have not yet appeared before that community council to flesh out the concerns of that particular community. But the issue, if we, but the real issue that we're going to need to address is developing enough understanding and support and gaining community acceptance so that we can move forward on this project. From a project financing perspective, it seems to be in the same ballpark and if in fact, you consider the fact that we will be keeping 1,100 units, which are critical for our housing needs, issues and assessments and you add all of those elements to the proposition, we may in fact be talking about something that in terms of total cost to the community is a real gain to the community. Let me conclude with noting that we need the support and, excuse me, we need the engagement of all the communities along the corridor if we're going to successfully sort out and move forward on the technical issues. And we're here tonight to address any issues or concerns that you might raise or that you might want us to look at as we go through the study phase. So I want to thank the council for the opportunity to review and further explore resolution of an issue that needs to be resolved. And I just want to note that of all the transportation projects and investments in the regional transportation plan, because of bottlenecks and what it does to the system, the 710 gap closure always seems to rise to the top in terms of regional significance and importance. So not only is it an important issue to the community, but it's an important issue to the, to the region as a whole and we look forward to working with you in hopes to resolve this longstanding issue.
Thank you very much. Welcome Doug. The last time you were here representing, of course, Caltrans, so you had a nice fat check for us.
I remember that well, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I take it there's no check tonight?
Didn't bring a check today.
We welcome you anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. It's a pleasure to be here again tonight. My name is Doug Felling and I represent Caltrans. And I had the pleasure of meeting with Roger quite some time ago and Jeff Morales and we had a conversation on many things, one of which was the 710 corridor. The issue we've before, as Roger's already said, is because of the issues that have polarized around the name of Caltrans, the saddest part is, is that no transportation project to benefit of the communities has been able to go forward for a number of years. And we needed to find some way of engaging some neutral discussion on what is right in the corridor. Roger said, yes, that was his first day on the job and he didn't know anything about it yet. He went away for a little while. He called me later and said, what'd you do to me? But he came back with a, with a concept. A concept that's before you. It's, the concept he put before us is basically the same concept that's in front of you here today on the napkin sheet, if you will. And asked what we thought. We spent some time, we looked at it, we recognized inherently there are some benefits to these communities in retaining housing, in retaining community interconnection and that structure. But we also recognize there are some technical complexities involved in tunneling projects. So our answer at that point in time was, and still is at this point, it's a very interesting proposal, does the region support it? Where are the communities on it? And that's an important next step for us to be able to understand that. So much time has been spent looking at various issues on 710. We feel it's very important to understand where the community is before a lot of time and money is spent on further technical studies, which may or may not prove out. So that's our official position. We appreciate the chance to be here, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Williams, congratulations. Mr. Plano actually opened the door. We're talking about, you know, a tunnel basically from the California border running Pasadena through South Pasadena down to Huntington, sorry, kind of Huntington Drive. As we talk about improvements, are we talking about only that section? Because I have some concerns about, you know, we have sound rail needs in Pasadena. You know, if we're tunneling under, South Pasadena would be really nice to cover over some of the stuff in Pasadena, for example. Are those issues, things that we can raise? The other sort of concern, actually a couple, I may as well just sort of say it all out. I'm lucky in my commute, I drive from Pasadena to Claremont. Wonderful town, right? Assistant city manager, CFO of Claremont. But I go against traffic and I see, you know, a lot of courtesans on the other side of the freeway, stuck from 605 all the way into Pasadena, not moving in the morning. And the other way, from 605 back into Fair Oaks Avenue in Pasadena, the other way, if we continue and do the tunnel alternative, is there relief in there for those folks or is it going to continue to compound that? I mean, are there improvements that are designed along there to, to deal with the extra traffic that the 710 is going to bring in, for example, and mitigate for the communities around there? And the other one is the other big question that Mark raised, which is, how's it all going to be paid for? That's a huge question right now as well. I suppose to start out with, I remember meeting Cynthia and I had a meeting with a guy from the Reason Foundation about three years ago, four years ago, where he was actually talking about a project in Versailles similar to this. And I actually just told Mr. Holden then, I'm sure the city council in Pasadena would appreciate MTA and Caltrans paying for a nice field trip, say July, August. Anyway, but you know, it was brought up then as a toll tunnel and, and so it's an idea that has been around a while and I know they're involved with, I think to some degree with this. And it's, it's an interesting solution to the community problem in South Pasadena, but there are a lot of other issues to deal with along the way as well. And I suppose I want to know, one, are there opportunities to open discussions on other areas that are going to be impacted by it? And then, you know, where is the money going to come from?
With respect to the financing of the program, the concept that the agencies are talking about, I guess to re-qualify, if we can, let me rephrase it, if we can gain community support and remove the litigation and address the community impacts, this is one of two or three gap closures that are left on the original Eisenhower plan for the interstate system. And as such, the project would qualify for federal interstate completion at a high share ratio, a 90% federal, 10% local share ratio. If we can re-qualify it as, as that interstate, interstate gap closure. So the, one of the objectives that they're working on is can we gain the community support so that we can re-enter the project in that funding cycle? And it is money that does not come through our allocation, but rather it's money that essentially would be taking off the top, so to speak, of the federal allocation. So there is a possibility that the, that the region could qualify this project and bring a fair amount of resources to the region without having to take it out of our local allocation. And then I'll let Roger and Doug speak to the other community impact issues and what it does to the, to the other improvements that would be needed.
As Mark said, our best hope for funding a project like this would be, is interstate funding. But to get interstate funding and to get this thing through, we're going to have to have very broad community support for it. To do that, there's a lot of issues that we've learned about this and the issues are very long. They go from farther south up to much farther north. And so I think as we define this project, it has a much longer scope than just the tunnel section and the completion of the gap itself. If we have interstate, if we go after interstate money, then we can consider mitigations that should have happened years ago and that should be happening now. So yeah, we've been sensitized to those already in our community meetings, so we have pretty good idea of what those might be.
So those kind of things could still come up in discussions?
If we can get everybody on board, then we would make the definition of this much broader and it would include that, it would include some other mitigating factors, some additional niceties that should have been done maybe a while ago or would be, needed to be done now, including sound walls, maybe some, some additional streets or ramps or different kinds of things.
There's a light rail project that'll take some traffic off.
It would be nice to, it would be nice to be able to look at it, as we could drive the road.
I know, I couldn't resist.
But assuming that there would be opportunities there for rapid bus and that sort of thing.
And I was the designated traffic one. So this particular corridor, although traffic that is currently using the 210, the traffic that you see going opposite direction, a number of them are projected to use it, it's not necessarily going to relieve, nor is it going to add to that particular problem. There's, there's a lot of traffic today that comes down the 110 headed towards downtown that a number of which will divert on the 710 because you can come around through the 10 spur into downtown. So we think that they will do, do a fairly good job overall, relieving traffic congestion through portions of downtown Los Angeles and a little bit on the city streets in Pasadena, particularly between the current stub of 710 and where the 110 begins, where we think an individual would see the most noticeable traffic benefits.
But not necessarily those.
Shouldn't, shouldn't add to that. There's a separate process that we're looking at now on more focused corridors like that one. Because of the current budget crunch that we're under, we're looking more closely at smaller scope congestion relief projects. We're just beginning that process. We've got a couple of corridors that we're concentrating on right now, but I know a number of people that live on 210 that talk to me constantly and I've put that on my staff's list.
I see your staff members too, isn't it? Yeah, he's on the camera side on Saturday.
Very good.
Yeah, he was actually, his son's pretty talented. But I think, you know, it's, it is getting worse. You know, I mean, a couple of years that I've been commuting out to Claremont, it is, there is more traffic and, you know, extending the 210 to a 15 has been wonderful for me, but may have had some impacts the other way as well. So I think what you're saying is you're looking at that as a separate issue, not as a part of this project, what you are looking at.
Yeah, part of the 210, yes.
Okay, thank you. Can I actually mention one more thing just while we have Mr. Snobel standing here? This morning and this afternoon, driving out to Claremont, the other thing that I noticed was we're two light rail vehicles under their own power in between the freeway. And I want to just express my appreciation to MTA and the staff for the work that they've been doing with the construction authority. And we're all looking forward to a tremendous opening, early summer, we hope, for that project. I just want to let you know how, how much I appreciate the staff that have been working with the construction authority on that project. They've done a great job.
Mr. Holden? Mayor, I'd just like to ask a question regarding the MTA's expectation of community, or envisioning of community support. Clearly Pasadena has taken a public vote on supporting completion of the freeway. Are you looking at something more specific beyond just sort of a general recognition that the gap needs to be closed and that the solution, this is out of the solution is the one you're proposing and some type of council action or community action happen as a precursor to your aggressively going forward with this as a potential solution?
Yes, that's an excellent question, Councilman, because that's kind of the key to it. We don't think we can get the funding for it and do all the things we need to do unless there's very broad support for it. And therefore, we see a kind of a process to develop that support. There are a lot of obstacles in the way, a lot of different people, a lot of different views of it. And so as we work through this process, we hope to eliminate those barriers to where we can get to a point where everybody has signed on to an agreement to start with, ultimately leading to resolutions in all the cities saying yes to they support whatever we develop. So it's going to be a lot of work to try to get everybody together and to listen to everybody and to go through this process. But we're sort of seeing a kind of a pattern that, well gee, if we do this, then we've gone to the next step and then if this happens, we've gone to the next step. So we're looking at, listening to everybody and what all their different wishes are and as we can start to riddle with those, we hope we could come to something. So before the MTA and Caltrans commits a lot of money into preliminary engineering and that sort of thing, we'd like to have some type of a memorandum of understanding between the major parties that this is a path that we all will agree to go to, realizing that there's safeguards along the way. So anyway, if something doesn't happen, people can, can get out of that memorandum.
And how do you define a major, who are the major parties?
Well, I think the cities involved directly in it, the CAG, the San Gabriel Valley CAG is important, but I'd include neighborhoods in it as well. I mean, they have a huge role in this and so I certainly want them to be party to it. They actually, you know, there are specific things that they see and would like to see further along and so I think they need to be certainly party to it and I think there's a lot of trust to be built there.
So you're talking about the cities, like the city council, being asked to sign a memorandum of understanding, but then separate and apart from the city council representing the interests of the city, sub-communities within the city, neighborhood groups also signing on. What happens if a neighborhood group decides it does not want to sign on?
Well, I think we.
And the council does?
Yeah, we work with them and if they're going to be against it, then they're, ultimately they'll be against it, but we'll have to deal with what the city wants, wants to do. And we need as broad a base of support as we possibly can, can get. The memorandum of understanding, just to get to that point, it's going to take a lot of work because we're going to have to really map out what the things are important, you know, there's parkland involved, there's road mitigations, there's, there's reconfigurations and all that sort of thing. So there is, there's a lot of work to do just to get to that, that point. And what we'd, we'd just like to know if it's, if it's worth trying to put that together, if we can put that together, then I think you're going to see the MTA and Caltrans develop what they can into it and we think we can bring some federal money into it as well.
Are you suggesting that the city council initiate a process that helps with gaining information and feedback from constituents and then that represents some period of time, working through that process to culminating in a council meeting with the council, taking a position on the memorandum of understanding? Are you trying to coordinate this amongst all the cities so it sort of happens all sequentially? Or if council, the city council in Pasadena engages its community in a more aggressive way and gets to a conclusion sooner than later, that acts as a catalyst to others? Or how do, I'm trying to get my handle around how you are envisioning lighting all this up, getting the support, making your way to some point in the future where you have the communities buying in as well as the agencies to know that you have something?
Yeah, well, it's going to take some leadership and I think I would just naturally to the city of Pasadena to provide a lot of that leadership and maybe help guide the way to get people together of other different cities, work with. get people together of the different cities, work with us to get the communities together. But frankly, seeing the city of Pasadena as being a big catalyst to see if we can come to a point where we can identify the issues, come up with a memorandum of understanding that everybody can buy into, then we can put some more money in, do some more of the preliminary engineering that's necessary for it, maybe get some federal funds to do that, to get further on down the road to where we can get to a point where, yeah, we'd have a legitimate project.
So in order for that to happen, you're anticipating that the city council will be intrigued by this notion of undergrounding and look to put this on its, on an agenda in the near future and initiate some type of public discussion, and you and others coming back and providing a more detailed presentation, maybe even with the, either your staffs and our staff, having a recommendation on a community outreach process whereby, at the end of some period of time, the council can take that feedback and have that culminate in a ratification of a memorandum of understanding. So we would then need to understand, someone would have to, some bodies would have to get together to craft a recommendation that outlines a strategy that would end up on our agenda that we can then support in concept and then begin to initiate, where maybe it's a series of public hearings, maybe the combined staffs get together and go out and educate the public, the neighborhoods, and after ninety days or a hundred and twenty days, then you come back with some type of direction based on that feedback, I would imagine. Is that what you're?
Yes, sir. I think that explains it very well. We will divert our community relations staff to work with the city and all the different cities, to work with your staffs, to develop a solid way that we're gonna go through it, because I don't want to leave anybody behind. We've gotta make sure everybody's included in it and to get as much broad-based support as we can for it. And what we're doing today is just simply saying, our approach has been quite simple. We think it's feasible, we think it's a good idea, but if people are gonna, if we go to any place in the city and they say, forget it, then we'll go back and try to do what's on the table, but we don't think that's the right thing. So if you say, if you say to us right now, you guys, you know, your mind, go away, then we'll go away. But if it's something that seems like we ought to work on, spend some time on, and hear your mind, then we should go forward.
Well, we can't take an action today, but it certainly sounds like a good idea. I showed that with you before. And to the extent that what was on the table, even though it is a proposal that for the region is probably a good one, looking at the broader picture, admittedly, it creates impacts on sub-communities. And this seems to mitigate a lot of those impacts. So just on, just on the surface, from what I've heard, if it's, it is feasible and there isn't going through fault lines and hitting gas pockets and you blow up half the city, then I think it makes a lot of sense.
Do you think we're in pretty good shape as far as anything?
Oh, nothing caves in. Mr. Tyler?
Thank you, Matt. It would seem to me, just listening to you, that if we're going to close the gap, that doing it on the ground is a better way if the money is about the same. I know you didn't say exactly, but it sounds like it's pretty close. Question I have is about the use of the thing when it's completed by heavy trucks. Because I think all of us have noted what's happened over the last decade on the 710 itself, with a high proportion of heavy trucks using that. And we've certainly seen a growing phenomenon some of us have on the 210, just in the last probably two or three months, for various reasons. And the question is, maybe the tunnel can handle those trucks, but wouldn't you have to do some pretty careful modeling as to the mix of heavy trucks versus all other traffic and figure out the impact, particularly in the north end of this gap closure? I don't know. Could we handle, could we handle a big increase in heavy truck traffic?
Councilman Tyler, the issue of trucks in this region, first of all, is probably the most pressing transportation issue that the region is facing because of the role we're playing in goods movement within this country. And the challenge for us on this particular corridor is for us not to use this as the primary method whereby trucks would get to the 210 to move east. And there's other investments that the region is proposing to take that proportionate of trucks and not put pressure on the freeway system going north. About eighty-five percent of our trucks move east, not north. About fifteen percent move north. Then the question becomes, what's the most efficient way for us to move the trucks that are trying to get around the city of LA and the four level? What's the most effective way for us to solve that problem? And to deal with that issue is a challenge that we haven't yet sorted out. Can we build a bike, I mean, a truck through a, through the four level, or would it be more effective for us to use the 710? But first of all, let me just say, the regional strategy is not to have the 710 beat a gap closure that allows trucks to get from the southern part of our region to the 210. Other investment strategies would be. And then for us to look carefully at this particular corridor on that issue. And if trucks were to be reintroduced, how would we do that? That would need to be separate from cars. And secondly, the issue that vice mayor Little raised becomes the critical issue. How do we mitigate the impacts if there is any truck traffic in this particular quarter? And those are among the issues that Roger, I'm gonna say that I believe was alluding to when we talked about, what are the other packages of investments that would complement this particular investment? But the question of trucks is still an outstanding issue. And right now, the tunnels, as we've, as on the paper napkin, does not provide for a truck strategy, and that's one we would have to come back and take a look at, particularly if we want to qualify for interstate funding.
Say it doesn't have a truck strategy?
Doesn't have trucks right now because the current, this was, this was put together under the basic assumption that we have on the mitigation program that was put together on 710, that this would not be a major north-south, that this would not be a major truck route.
But it could, but it could have trucks.
It could have trucks.
Heavy trucks.
Localized trucks. And there's a real issue that the region will need to look at, that we haven't yet sorted out. How are we gonna get the trucks north-south through the region? And that is still an outstanding issue, and that's why I framed it as an outstanding issue.
Does the current 710 configuration, for some reason, I thought that that was not allowing trucks on that portion?
That's what Councilman Hadland, that's correct.
And is it a physical structure that doesn't allow the trucks, or is it a?
It's a policy.
It's a policy. A policy that could be changed more easily than a structure could be changed?
That is correct.
And this tunneling idea would be operating on that same principle that policy is not to use it for trucks, but structurally it could be used for trucks?
That, I'm not even, the way it has been laid out, Roger, help me, I would lay it out, it would be from mixed flow and not for heavy-duty truck.
What does that mean?
It means that localized trucks could use the facility, but it would not be designed for a major heavy-duty truck route at this time.
It seems to me you couldn't go back and redesign it. I'm struggling with, is it designed to handle that sort of flow, but the policy says, no, we're not gonna use it that way? Or is it not designed that way and you would have to go back and redesign it to allow for the heavy truck flow?
Simple, simple answers to say answer A. It is, it is designed, like all the rest of the freeways are, that would be sufficient with height structural support so that a heavy truck, a legal heavy truck would be able to use it as it uses any road. So if a policy change happened in the future, you would not have to go back and do physical redesign, but you would prohibit them, similar to we prohibit them on the 110 right now coming north out of downtown.
Okay, that's, that's.
Okay, but you, the idea, the idea, I need to make sure we're clear on this. The idea is not to eliminate all heavy trucks, because there are a lot of local deliveries, grocery stores, local grocery stores, things that would still be allowed to use, large size trucks, that still would be allowed to use that well for those local deliveries.
As would the currently proposed 710.
Correct.
Under the same principles.
Same principle, yes.
I had a couple other questions.
Mr. Holden?
Well, I'll comment, I have two comments. One, this city council's task might be a little bit different than other cities in the sense that the city has taken a public vote and it's taken a public position. So it seems to me that our task is to determine whether what is being proposed is consistent with what that position was, that, and which may take a little bit of homework to figure out exactly what that position was, but it seems to me it's a little simpler. Is this consistent with the city's position? And it seems to me that we would be somewhat bound by that, that, you know, we're looking at it in a little narrower focus than other cities may be looking at it. My other comment is that I'm glad to hear that you would be considering the impact of this project beyond just the ends of the tunnel, that the impact of this project will, I believe, be beyond the ends of the tunnel, like it'll be extending east on the 210 freeway and north on the 210 freeway. And sound walls is one issue, but certainly an issue that I think needs to be attended to. As we have seen traffic increase, as we have seen truck traffic increase, the noise has gone up considerably on those two sections, and we are grinding our way towards taking action on that. But this would make that worse, and I would hope that that would be addressed in this project.
If I might speak to your first issue relative to consistency, as we've begun to meet with the communities, there are a number, this issue has clearly polar sides to it, and there are concerns of those who want to see the freeway move and move under its current configuration, and they want to make sure that whatever we're doing on this particular effort will not undermine their efforts to push through the current completion of the EIS and successfully defend its lawsuits. And there are those who are adamantly opposed and want to have their rights protected. Intrinsic, inherent in the discussion that Roger had with Councilman Holden is how in fact do we put together the agreement so all of the current positions are not compromised, at the same time we see we can truly explore and define an alternative that might bring the parties together. And that's gonna be the real craftsmanship of how we put an agreement together that will allow us to move forward, so that current rights are not taken off the table, whatever side you are on the issue, and at the same time, we find a way in which we can bring the parties together. And how we craft that kind of agreement is gonna need to consider that dynamic.
In that regard, Mark, you know, I just confirmed my understanding that when we talk about community support, it's probably worthwhile to point out that at the outset, the support that is needed is non-objection to the conduct of certain studies. Nobody's rights, nobody's positions, nobody's thinking has to be changed except, let's get some data in front of us. And then at some point in the future, when the data is in front of us, further decisions or further community support will be required and to support a project that is based on that data, and that might, you know, be consistent with all the limitations that now exist pursuant to mitigation negotiations that have taken place, and I think are pretty fully reflected in the record of decision, or they might modify those in some way. But that's a discussion and a need for community support that's a long time in the future, as I understood it.
Mr. Abreu?
Mine isn't a question as much as it's a comment. Both of the, well, the city's position and the vote that was taken, taken by the people was essentially that we needed to complete the freeway, and we needed to complete it because both people in Pasadena and the whole region really needed a way to get to and from the southern part of the county up to the north. My concern is that if we go down this road for tunneling, that at some point it becomes a private project. Two of the projects that come to mind are the 886 project in Paris, which was a tunneling project. That was a $2 billion project, and it was funded entirely based on its projected revenues. It became a toll road, and it became a road that was, could be used only by people who could afford to pay for the, to pay the toll on a daily basis. The other project is the project in Australia for the Olympics. That also was funded privately through a consortium, and again, it became a toll road for people who could afford it. My concern is if we're going to go down this road, I would like us to state upfront that we will not allow that to happen with this tunnel, that this tunnel, if built, would be available to everyone and not become a toll road for the few who can afford it on a daily basis. So as part of the public outreach, I would like to see us make a statement ahead of time, because I'd hate to see us get into a situation where we have some public funding and then we need some sort of bridge funding or private dollars, and all of a sudden we're faced with a half, half a project and we need the money, and so we go get a private consortium, but then creates a toll road situation.
Councilman, when we first started to look at this, that was obviously a consideration that we had, that because the gap closure itself is really not yet designated as an interstate project. But then as we started to work through it and realize that this is really one of the last gaps in the interstate system, and that we should be able to get ninety percent money for it, and if we were to do that, then it would be, would remain an interstate highway and would not require any kind of toll or anything like that. Another option could be if there was a truck element in another set of tunnels or something like that, we could toll that tunnel. But what we're trying to do is get, if we can work our way through this process, get an MOU, work it out a little farther, at some point in time we have a whole new environmental statement, we have, the suits are dropped, we can go forward with it. As an interstate, then we can, we can do it pretty easily. So that's what we've been looking at. There are other places, there's a tunnel being proposed between Orange and Riverside County that would be a toll tunnel and that they're, they're working on, but we really think we have a unique opportunity in this one to make it part of the freeway system, really a freeway.
Well, it would be unique because most of them have been privately financed.
Yeah, and that's what's happening around the, around the country, and as you look at toll roads, the tremendous revenue stream that comes from the toll roads, and a lot of places now are turning to toll roads as the only real practical way that they can do major highway projects. But we think we have an opportunity, and we might as well see if we can take advantage of it.
The agenda, Chris, is structured tonight so that if the council wished to express support for taking this very, very preliminary study or proposal one more step, which would be to, I don't know exactly what the step would be, but I don't think, Roger, you and your colleagues are asking us to do more tonight than say, we refrain from objecting to what you're telling us, and we're open to hearing a little bit more about it the next time you have something to show us.
And we might just work with your staff a little bit more to come up with a more specific plan on how we would proceed. That would be a good, good thing to allow us to do as well.
It sounds to me, Chris, that even though the agenda would maybe give some latitude to giving some kind of a concept approval, I think it's a better course of action for the council to instruct the city manager to work with the MTA staff and SCAG staff and all appropriate Caltrans to prepare some type of a strategy. and all appropriate Caltrans to prepare some type of a strategy or recommendation for us, maybe it's an outreach plan, that can then be brought back to the council at appropriate time, and then we can take action on that and direct where appropriate. Maybe there are timeframes that are built into it, maybe there's a draft concept MOU that we can look at, something that the staff can help advance this discussion beyond the input that we've had tonight.
That's certainly the basis for consensus if the council wishes to consider it such as giving instruction to the city manager.
And just one other thought to that, and the point was made tonight and at a previous meeting regarding further impacts that the freeway project has on the northern part of the city in relationship to sound walls and how to mitigate, is now you're talking about putting more people moving through that community, albeit on a freeway. There should be an accelerated installation of sound walls, and so that should be connected to this, so it's viewed as one project and not that we do this and then we've got an issue, and we've got to deal with down the road. But how do we mitigate the sound, the increased sound that's created by more traffic now moving along the freeways? So it's, so some additional thoughts should be given to that as well.
Does that seem like sufficient clarifications from the council, Cynthia, that we can move forward with that?
I believe so, and I will certainly look to the people that are here this evening. But in saying that, you're saying that you are interested in the concept, you would like to see us look at how we would move it forward, how we would get something more structured back before the council. But I believe that it shows support for the idea, which is what your hope was, that each city would, would say it was worth looking at, and the council's saying what they'd like to see next.
Right, and also identify some issues that we'd like to see addressed as a part of this.
Defining the project broadly--
There's several others, I think, that we can--
You mentioned one, you mentioned some.
But I, I mean, I will say that I think it's a concept that we do need to look at. I appreciate your, your, all three together bringing it forward.
I'd like, as shared, to consider that a consensus of the council, as stated by Mr. Holden. And in addition, the minutes will show that we did not throw you out tonight when you came here to tell us.
Thank you very much, Steve.
Thank you very much. I'd like next to do something that should, under normal circumstances, take just a moment, and that is to put before the council for action the consent calendar. Doing it, even at the risk of taking a moment or two to answer questions, would allow a number of staff people to excuse themselves tonight and go on with their evening, and I think it's worth trying to do this. Is there any item on the consent calendar which a member of the council wishes to have removed from a suite motion?
I'd move approval.
Second? Are there any objections to the consent calendar? It stands approved. Now, we have scheduled at 7:30 a discussion. It is listed on the agenda as item 5A1. It's a matter in which there's considerable public interest, and it seems appropriate to go to that at this point. We regret that we're behind schedule, but all of these tentative timeframes on the agenda are subject to the completion of the last prior item. This is a, on the agenda, it says, direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance prohibiting commercial activity in commercial public roadways within the city.